Pro Tem Cassidy here. And Mayor Marshall.
Okay.
And for the record, Councilmember Olson is away on city business.
Oh geez. Are there any other announcements or written communications?
The only announcement I have this morning is, Mayor, I'd ask if at five minutes to 12 that we could be finished by then so we could go over and partake in Christian Cisneros being pinned as a firefighter.
I think that would be wonderful.
And that's at noon, so.
Okay.
That's our goal, to be done by five minutes.
Okay. In oral communications, this is an opportunity for people in the public to speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. Seeing that no one's coming forward, there's nothing on the consent, and let's go to general business.
We're just gonna go right to Matt this morning as a continuation of our last study session.
So, my goal for today's study sessions is to go a little more in-depth in some of the operating budgets. I've developed slides for some of the funds and departments that I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to visit in more detail. I don't have every fund or every department pulled up in the presentation, so if there are departments or funds that I've passed that we would like to discuss, we can do it after we get through, but I just wanted to make sure that certain funds got the attention I felt they needed. The overall flow is, I was planning on giving an overview of the activity in the fund and then turning it over to council if there were specific questions about that particular fund or department, and then hopefully moving through the various funds and departments in that manner. The presentation that's in front of you is the same that's gonna be on the screen, kind of outlining, hopefully, the discussion for this afternoon or this morning. The highlighted funds that you see in this fund balance schedule are ones that I'm going to be focusing on. Again, the reason I'm focusing on these for our discussion today are they are funds that are currently resulting in draws on fund balance, in some cases for operating, and in other cases, the draw on fund balance is coming from capital or transfers to other funds. And so those are the funds that I really think we need to pay close attention to and warrant further discussion.
Matt, could you stop one moment? I want to make sure the mayor is on the right, and also in this.
Oh, yeah. Oh, thank you very much. Okay, boy.
So, these numbers here have been updated since the version that you received as part of our study session on Tuesday. As we get to changes that were made from Tuesdays, I will call those out specifically. We didn't go through the exercise of recreating the entire budget, but after hopefully discussions today, the version that you'll receive by the end of the day Friday will reflect all the changes that we have made this week. So, some of the questions that came up during the last study session related to labor and labor comparisons, so what I wanted to do is provide a breakdown of the increases in labor costs and what the sources of those increases are. It's more difficult this year than in prior years to compare at a department or a fund level because we have made some changes to how we're allocating labor, which, as we go on in the presentation, you'll see what I mean from there. So this is looking at labor across all funds and departments at the city as a whole, and just looking at salaries and overtime. And so you can see the largest portion of the increase, so overall labor increased, labor cost, wages, and overtime increased, six percent from last year's budget. That's driven by the positions in last year's budgeted that were only budgeted for a portion of the year, now being budgeted for a full year. So, for example, the Assistant City Manager in last year's budget was only budgeted for half the year, similarly, the Finance Director for three-fourths of a year. And so those positions being in the budget for a full year contribute some to the overall increase in labor costs. The next one on the list you'll see is current year budgeted step and longevity increases. Thirdly, the new billing official position that's currently vacant. The fourth on the list is prior year step increases, longevity increases in promotions. And so what I mean by that is if we have an employee making $10 an hour who's anticipated to go up to $12 an hour at January 1st, in last year's budget, we would have budgeted them as an $11 an hour employee, but now for this year's budget, he is making 12 for the entire year, and so that increase is what I mean by prior year step increases. So if an increase only applies to a portion of last year's budget, it would now then apply for the full portion of this year's budget. And then lastly, we do have an increase in budgeted part-time hours, which we're gonna go over in a little more detail on the next slide.
But like insurance costs and those things, where are those, are those put into this whole salary thing too?
Those are not reflected in the schedule here. This is purely just increase driven by wages. If you'd like, we can provide a similar schedule for overtime or, but, or, excuse me, for retirement, but that's also going to be partially pegged to any increase in labor. There'd be a corresponding increase to FICA contributions or a corresponding increase to retirement contributions in general.
Well, even just like health insurance, has that gone up a certain percentage from last year and that kind of thing? Are those numbers reflected?
Those would not be reflected in the schedule, but I can provide a more detailed breakdown on Tuesday, if you'd like, of what our medical costs look like.
So when you talk about insurance, let's say, I just threw open the Harbor Fund, is that medical insurance, would you think?
Yes, that'd be medical and also workers' comp would be pruned in there.
Okay, so that's in each of the department budgets?
That's in each of the department budgets. This right here is just purely talking about labor, and I just wanted to.
I totally get it.
To provide that comparison, since the changes in how we allocate across funds make it difficult to do it at a fund or a department level in this year's budget to prior budgets.
Yes.
So I wanted to provide this overall breakdown comparison.
Nice.
So again, part-time hours, this is the budgeted part-time hour increase, what's making up that number you saw on the previous slide. I wanted to provide, one caveat, the two that have asterisks by it, those were both positions included in last year's budget, but only for a portion of the year because they were vacant. And so that's why the increase from those two positions was due to those vacant positions now being filled for a full year. The other increases, if you have any questions, the department heads are here to speak to, or we can speak to them when we get to their operating budget sections. But if there aren't any further questions on the slides, I will continue on.
You, council, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is a legal fee comparison. So this is our City Attorney Retainer with BBK. This is a breakdown comparison of how those legal costs are allocated across funds and departments. You will see that there is, right now, we're estimating our General Admin to come under budget last year, but that's because there's likely going to be some increases in other departments' budgets. And so based on the estimates we have for '19, we did adjust less money towards the General Administration and Insurance, and some additional funds towards other departments were based on the activity we've seen this year.
And this doesn't account for any reimbursement? This is just straight out?
This is, this is our straight legal costs for the City Attorney Services. So, moving on now to the General Fund, and this is where we're gonna start getting into the actual operating budgets. I have made some changes to our revenue estimates. When I'm doing the estimates, I'm looking at year-to-date information. A lot of the estimates I based off of looking at numbers through April 30th. I went back yesterday to look at the numbers through May to see if potentially some of my estimates could be adjusted. As part of building the estimates, we also do look at information that's available as far as tourism as a whole, so we look at things like Visit California and the analysis they perform, you know, as well as other economic news to try to indicate a basis of where we think the economy's heading. We're, I'd say if I could give an overall assumption, you know, everyone is concerned of an upcoming recession, and there are certain things to indicate that, but everything that I've read has indicated that may be 18 months to two years away. So right now, the overall assumption is relatively stable, slight increases in General Fund revenues largely driven by inflation. So as the average price of a room goes up slightly, we see some of that benefit in TOT. Our TOT, I did revise the estimate, projecting that our TOT revenues will increase by 1.7%. So that's relatively flat, but if the average room price were to go up by 2% and the exact same number of tourists were to come to the island, the city would see a corresponding 2% increase in its TOT revenues. But it's relatively flat, slightly less than what CPI currently is. Admissions tax, similarly, we're projecting to be relatively flat. Sales tax, we base our estimate for sales tax on our sales tax consultant, and so they're anticipating an increase in their '19 estimate by 3.6%, which is a 1.5% increase from their revised budget, that revised number that was presented back in the February mid-year update.
And I have a question, I'm sorry, on the.
Yes.
On the TOT, the comment that only Councilman Olson made to you when we got out of the meeting about with.
I took his feedback, and that's why I went back and looked at the numbers. I can tell you, January through April, TOT numbers compared to January through April of last year were down approximately 3.5%. For the 12 months for the year, we are down less than 1%, though. There were some stronger numbers in the beginning of the year that have helped offset that. One of the things that was brought up and considered as part of the analysis, as new hotels potentially would be opening up at some point during the next fiscal year.
Right.
I would anticipate increased average room prices, which helps our TOT numbers, as well as increased advertising and promotion of those hotels. Hopefully, we'll see a slight uptick in visitors staying the night. Again, I, my estimate was less than what Councilmember Olson and I discussed. I would be happy to come back at mid-year and say I was wrong and the number's even higher. I didn't feel comfortable going quite as high, just given uncertainties. You know, we had poor weather this year, but that's not to say the weather won't be bad next year, and there's a lot of variables that go into the TOT budget. So this was a number I felt comfortable standing behind.
Right.
And I'm, I will be happy to admit I was wrong if at the mid-year, the numbers shake out.
He was talking, of course, about the outwater in Zangui going up and.
Right. But also, there's a significant number of room losses this year due to boats not running and weather.
So, I mean, again, I will happily come back and say I was wrong at mid-year, but this was a number I felt confident that we could achieve.
I would prefer to estimate low than try to get right on.
Yeah.
So, the next slide kind of gives a breakdown of where we're estimating to finish '19 and where we're currently budgeting for fiscal year '20, as well as a percentage of those revenues, overall portion of the General Fund. The one thing I want to highlight is I did not include the Successor Agency Administration revenue, so that's the admin allowance we received for managing the successor agency. And the reason for that is in our '19 estimate, we have the budgeted transfers from '17 and '18 that are, would skew for comparison purposes. What I'm really trying to show with this slide is that we are projecting our General Fund revenues relatively flat with a slight increase of approximately 2%, 3%. Where, and a lot of that growth we see is really just inflationary in nature. But that's really the purpose of this slide, to show where our budget for next year compares to where we think we're gonna finish this year. So this is a slide that we shared yesterday, and it's gonna be serving as kind of the outline for going through the General Fund operating expenditures. We're gonna go through the Fire Department, Law Enforcement, Public Works, Recreation and Planning in detail, but if there are questions on any of those other departments, I don't have a slide built for them, but we can certainly answer those questions at the end of the presentation. So this is the General Funds Administration Department, and the primary activity that comes out of this fund is internal service allocations, and that's for special revenue funds, where there are legal restrictions on how we spend the money, but the city does have to provide administrative services for those, and so that's how we charge for that in this fund, and that's what those internal service amounts are. And then the second piece of it, this is where we transfer monies from the General Fund to other funds if there is an anticipated shortfall in their activity. And as you can see, the primary to our Avalon Transit Fund and our Traffic Safety Fund, and we'll look at those funds in more detail later in the presentation. Unless there are questions on this slide, we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, looks like, okay.
And the next one is just, again, highlighting the transfers coming out of this fund. So the next slide is for our Law Enforcement Services. We do not have any labor related, directly related to law enforcement, and it's all done through our contract with LA County Sheriff. You will see we have contracted for five sheriffs at an annual rate of $277,000 per sheriff. That is a fully loaded sheriff, and what I mean by that is that's also how we pay for the administrative costs of the Sheriff's Department to run their department, so they do their own payroll, they do their own IT, they do their own maintenance on their buildings. So that 277 isn't just a sheriff's salary, it's all the additional things that go with running a sheriff's department. In addition, you'll see liability insurance, we pay separately as part of our contract with LA County Sheriffs. And so that was one of the reasons why we looked at our internal service allocations, because historically, we had also been charging our General Fund Law Enforcement Department for a portion of the city's liability insurance, but we're essentially double-charging it because we're paying for liability coverage as part of our sheriff's contract. And that was one of the motivations to really look at those internal service allocations, to make sure that they made sense and were in line with the actual benefits that those funds and departments were getting. Unless there's any questions about the Sheriff's Department or the Sheriff's Contract, we'll move on. So this is the Fire Department. Again, a lot of the expenditures in the Fire Department are tied to labor. We have 10 full-time firefighters, which is equal to 13 full-time equivalents, because the average firefighter shift is greater than 2,080 hours. Changes in the MOU did see a shift in costs from overtime to base salaries. Unless there are any questions for the Sheriff's Department, the other major change is in the capital outlay, that vehicle replacement for $1 million, that is pegged to, or conditioned upon us receiving the grant monies for it, but that is a new line item if you're comparing to prior years. So unless there are any questions for the Fire Department budget, we will move on.
Can we just ask the question, if this is the time?
This is the perfect time.
And I guess that would be a question of all department heads. Is there anything that you put in the budget that was, that was totally crossed out that you're just like totally bummed you're not gonna get?
Speaking for the Fire Department, we haven't, no, not to this point, that there's nothing that I've submitted or talked with staff about that's been pulled from the budget or pulled for any reason.
Okay, great, thank you.
So the next we have is General Funds Public Works. Again, Public Works employees in general are split between Harbor Public Works and the General Fund Public Works. You will see a slight decrease in salaries, and that's really dealing with labor allocation, where we have some of the Public Works Director time shifted to Harbor Capital, considering the major capital projects planned for next year in the, in the Harbor Department. Again, if there are any specific questions on Harbor Public Works, we can take those at this time, or we can move to, I believe, Planning would be next.
Matt, I just suggested we give them a couple minutes for each of these slides or so.
Right, right.
I need, I know we don't have any time to.
Just trying to make sure we see the pinning.
So, for example, under Public Works in Office Supplies, for example, you had, you know, in '18, you had 2884, your budget at 2,000, the estimate is 82, is that just kind of arbitrary in a way, those numbers?
So the estimate, how I would have come up with the estimate is I would have looked at year-to-date spend through April, and then taken, say, the average amount we are spending per month and projecting that outward. If there were any that were significantly below budget, what I tried to do was follow-up to see for an account with a dollar amount of 2,000, I might not have gone to the department head and asked. But for ones that are a larger dollar amount, I would see if there was any major purchases that were anticipated in May or June that would potentially skew the average, if you will. You know, it's, it's difficult when estimating, and there's probably some estimates going through it over the past week that I may look at and revise in different directions based on activity. Building these estimates, I'm looking at the information I have as of April, as of the end of April, and then trying to project forward. It's, you know, some accounts, it's easier than others to do that.
Oh, no doubt, yeah.
But it is partially based on the year-to-date spend, and then it's also based on discussions with the department head if there is opportunities to scale back to do so. And on the utilities, to speak to that one, since there is a major change from prior year budget, where a lot of that's getting moved is we were charging Cemetery Utilities to Public, General Fund Public Works. I've now moved it to the Cemetery Trust Fund Utilities. Again, they're both ultimately General Funds, so the net impact on the General Fund's zero. But if, the question of why the Utilities change, it's really getting now pushed to the Cemetery Trust Fund, where I thought it was more appropriate to be charged to. But the net impact on the General Fund for that is negligible.
And when, just policy or whatever, when we order office supplies, do we have, are we or will we look at, is there someone that's saying, okay, what does everybody need, so let's bill by and bulk, or is all this, a lot of this, I know some is special to a department, but are we doing some of that bulk order across all departments?
I know there are several departments, they place their order with Christie in the Finance Department, so she keeps track of who needs what, and that way, not every department was ordering, but I know the Fire Department orders independently, and the Harbor Department. Recreation and Planning, do you send your orders to Christie? Yeah.
Okay.
So we changed that a few years ago, so there was more control over it.
So I have shifted over to the Planning Department. Just something to draw attention to with regards to salaries and benefits, the increase is being driven by that new proposed building official position, as well as changes to the Planning Director's labor allocation. Historically, a portion of her time was being charged to the Successor Agency Admin, but as successor agency or redevelopment projects wound down, it no longer was necessarily appropriate to be charging some of her time there, and so we made changes to how her time is being allocated going forward. And so that is also contributing to some of that increase. There are three full-time positions in the Planning Department that make up that number. And again, the, the cost of that building official is being offset by decreases to the Building Inspector Services.
Okay, and then the City Attorney Retainer?
Yes, so that would be when Planning or any department is working directly with our City Attorney. Rather than charging everything to the General Admin when it's clear for the purpose of one department, we're trying to make sure those departments are paying directly for those costs. That allocation process is managed by the City Manager's Office, so not necessarily the department head, but it is based on the, the activity between BB and K and the respective department head for departments that have a legal.
Is that, is that basically the only department where we would see?
You would also see it in the Harbor, and there, I believe Sauer as well has a specific City Attorney Retainer.
And the increase, Mayor, in this department, we had changes in some ordinances, like the density bonus, the ADU, we had some final issues, Vons, Trailhead, Residential Inspection, the LCP, so it all added up.
No, I, I get it.
And again, those, those legal costs should be absorbed because our General Admin legal costs are estimated to be down from where we had budgeted, so it's not necessarily that we're spending more in legal, we're just spending it in different ways where we had budgeted. You know, going forward, and this is part of the budget policies, this is something we would want to then, as part of our policies, when there are shifts like this, be able to present that to council if there are anticipated budget shifts of that nature. So even though we're not necessarily spending more in legal, we're just spending it differently than how we anticipated.
Could you do me a favor, Matt?
Yes.
Could you push that monitor over to the, thank you, now I can see your complete face, thank you.
Sounds good. And then just to go back real quick, if we're talking legal, here is kind of the breakdown of, by department and fund, of where we have it allocated. And in the future, if there is, say, more in Harbor than we're anticipating, but less in General Administration, we can show that in budget transfer requests, that's, and that process is outlined in that budget policy document.
Okay.
So the next up would be Recreation Labor. The one thing I do want to call out is, based on the version that we shared with you previously, we have made adjustments downward towards the number of part-time hours. This was based on discussions I had with Dan. So the new number for salaries part-time is closer to 95. And this is another example in the estimates where I may go back and revisit, we had some vacancies in the part-time positions, and so when I did my estimates for where I felt labor was gonna fall for the year, I'm basing it on the average pay period, but in part-time Recreation's case, that may not be the most accurate considering those vacancies, so it may be closer to 60 or 70 if I were to revisit that estimate for '19's spend, '19's estimate. And a lot of that's due to just vacancies in filling some of the part-time positions. So the 20 budget number that you should see in the version that we share tomorrow will be closer to 95,000 in part-time hours, or part-time salaries.
The version tomorrow?
So.
That's just the update for Tuesday's meeting, right?
Exactly, so, yeah.
I, I'm not missing a meeting tomorrow, right?
You're not missing a meeting tomorrow.
Yes, indeed.
We, you know, we will by the end of day, on Friday, have an updated version of this document to share with you, and it will reflect the changes that we made this week. We didn't have the time for the turnaround today, but we will have it tomorrow. And the next I've pulled up is Maintenance and Operations for Recreation, and Dan's here to be able to speak to any of these, but there's not a lot of significant changes from prior year activity.
Could I just ask Dan a quick question? Are there any programs that have been discontinued for the upcoming year?
Not that I can think of. I mean, everything that we're doing are programs that we're looking to kind of continue to build and develop. I think I chaired at a previous council meeting, we are finding as we're doing more programming, we're programming on the same, you know, 600 kids, school, that we're seeing some of our programs be a little smaller because we're offering, instead of, you know, one thing per session, we've got four or five different options for them. So we are seeing that, but expenses will be adjusted accordingly, staffing for that particular program will be, but nothing that we're looking to cut as of, as of right now.
Just adding programs?
Correct.
Cool, thank you.
And then, Dan, if you wouldn't mind standing up, I know you had some additional adjustments that I didn't incorporate into the version that was shared, and I apologize to put you on the spot, and we can always bring it up on Tuesday's meeting, but I do know you, you shared with me in an email last Friday, there are some additional updates to the operating budget, and maybe we can bring those up on Tuesday if now's not the time.
We made the adjustments to the revenue?
We did make the revenue adjustments, and we made the adjustments to the labor, but I recall receiving an email from you last Friday, and it wasn't in time for me to incorporate it in the budget, so I thought now would be, if not, we can, we can bring it up on Tuesday. I'm sorry to put you on the spot like that, but I do recall getting that email, and I just wanted to make sure that if we do make that change, we get it in the, in the budget. So we'll, we'll chat offline and bring that up to you guys on Tuesday. Sorry about that, Dan.
So I have a couple, oh, please.
I just, special department expenses, what, I've seen that on a couple of these, which is means?
So that, one thing that does go in there, and Dan can speak to the majority of it, but in the proposed MOUs, the proposed commuter subsidy. but in the proposed MOUs, the proposed commuter subsidy reimbursement, I have been budgeting that to the special department expense. That is not the majority of the expenses in there, but that is one thing that Dan might not be aware of. I took whatever budgeted number Dan had and added to his budgeted number for that purpose, but the majority of it, Dan, you should be able to.
Yeah, for the recreation department, it's a little bit of a catch-all. For example, for a basketball program, we'll have, you'll see a basketball expense and uniforms and trophies and, you know, officials will come out of that. For special department supplies, it would be things like bands for what we're doing on regularly staged, say, for Labor Day, bands that we'll have across the street this year for that little bit of concert series that we're going to do, outrigger jerseys, if we need new paddles, you know, those types of program supplies.
So, so you can stay there, standing up. How about, because I don't, if it's somewhere else, I don't know. Was there a discussion on some, some little seed money for homeless project?
And that's just, that triggers what that email was for. It was the run-swim, $5,000 and whether we had put, and if not, that would be something we'll just have to capture in that special event. But I don't think at this point we put anything in for homeless, that's not something to discuss with finance about. I think our discussion, the plan would be to go out to the community and possibly ask for some donations along those lines, and I think we can get support for that from some of the service clubs out there and some of the.
And 4th of July, is that under special departmental expense?
So that is not, and I apologize, it's not on the screen. That comes out of the community services portion of the budget, and so we have a recreation and a community services department. Since there was not a lot of activity in the community services department, I didn't pull that on the screen, but there is, I believe, 50,000 in the budget for 4th of July, which is consistent with the prior years.
And meals on wheels?
That is also included in the budget, the, on the expense side, it's in the CDBG fund, 119, and I believe the amount is around 25,000, and it would be consistent with prior years.
Okay.
But I can confirm those.
And, well, that's okay. Okay, and we're going to talk later about revenue generation and revenue decreases. This isn't where we talk about that now, right? That'll be later on?
I mean, if we want to talk about that now, we can, or my thought would be that we could talk about it at the end, but I'm happy to talk about that now.
No, let's keep all this.
No, let's keep going.
Keep it together, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
So the next slide I have pulled up, this is the, a special revenue fund, so our revenues we've received from citations have to be spent on citation or on traffic safety type activities. The one change I did make is, this year, we're looking to bring in about 62,000 in traffic citation revenue. I have revised the estimate from 55,000 to 65,000 for fiscal year '20, so you're going to see that change in your Friday budget. We have two code enforcement employees who a portion of their time is charged to this fund, and then, as you can see, there's a few special department expenditures associated with this.
Okay, let's go back.
And the decrease in salaries is due to the new position likely would be starting at the beginning salary where we had an experienced code enforcement officer leave the department.
Okay. And in terms of fines, just for my information, and so we write the tickets, are we giving any of our money to somewhere, somebody else on these traffic fines?
We are, and I believe the answer is twofold. One, we do use a company data ticket to help manage our collections process, so we now have the ability for, ticketed individuals now have the ability to pay online, and so that is, I don't know what happened to the screen, but that is managed by data ticket, so any of those online payments that are made, they are able to update the database of all the tickets. When the code enforcement officer issues a ticket, it is uploaded to their database, so they are able to track and monitor and administer the ticketing process. Finance is involved. If someone wants to pay that ticket in cash at the window, they certainly can do so with us, but data ticket does manage that collection process, and as well as a portion of the tickets, I believe, goes to the county court system. So we do receive revenues from tickets, but that number that's reported there is after data ticket's portion for administering, as well as any portion that would potentially go to the county. So that is, the number we're showing there is what our take-home is, if you will.
So when I pay a ticket here, which I never get, but if I were to pay a ticket here, data ticket would still get a percentage of, it's a percentage, not a flat rate, right?
I would have to go back to the contract, but I believe it is a percentage, but.
I can't remember what the percentage is, Mayor, and also, they help us if somebody, we used to handle all the disputes internally, and now they do the first round of disputes, and the new ticket system we have, which is the electronic handheld thing, takes the pictures and everything, so disputes pretty much go away because we have proof of it.
Right.
And then the second appeal does come to the city to do further, then it takes staff time. And I know when we switched to data ticket, well, actually, they bought the company we were dealing with originally, and it's been a great benefit to us.
Okay. I mean, I would, it's a shame when we, I don't know, I guess I shouldn't say it's a shame that this can't be a balanced thing, but the number of tickets coming in pays for the salaries of the people, because they write a heck of a lot of tickets, so I would have just thought it would have been more money than that, but, anyway, that's okay. And if this, so if the sheriff's department were to issue a similar ticket, if they marked a tire or they saw something that oftentimes code does, how is that money handled? Because it's, they're not using data ticket, right?
I believe their tickets get turned into us also, so it goes through the same system, depending on what the citation is and what triggers going to court.
Right.
Now, if it goes to the court system, we get a very minimal amount, time, all the fees are paid, so all the outside things. And that was one of the reasons we switched to admin tickets also, to prevent going to the courts.
Oh, right.
So we would get more money from them.
That's right, I do have my call, and I have to say that. Thank you, okay.
And I don't have the information, I think it was requested on Tuesday, a split of how much is generated from sheriffs versus code enforcement. I will try to get that information for Tuesday, but right now, I don't have that information.
And I don't know that it's critical for budget, but it's, because I don't think it's going to reflect anywhere on the budget, but it would be good, so if you guys are, you know, you're really cranking on all this other stuff, if that comes a little later, we're fine. I'm fine anyway, yes.
So, moving on then in the budget, we're now looking at the harbor fund revenues. Again, I did skip over a few of the special revenue funds, we can go back after this and discuss, but I wanted to make sure we had enough time on certain funds. Again, this is a comparison of operating revenues by type. If you notice, we did increase the cross-channel warfage, but you're not seeing any increase in the budget. That is because the increase 100% went towards harbor capital, and the schedule here is strictly for harbor operations, including fuel dock operations. As you can see, cross-channel warfage is still the largest share of harbor revenues, followed by harbor service charges, which are the nightly mooring rates. Again, if I were to summarize this, the anticipated revenues is relatively flat, with the exception to warfage for cruise ships, which the warfage rate is increasing July 1st from $3.50 to $4 per passenger. That amount is also net of any reimbursement we give for the incentive payments to cruise ships with more than so many dockings per year. So that is net of any incentive payment.
Do you split admissions tax, or does all admissions tax go into the harbor fund?
Any admissions tax generated from harbor activity stays in the harbor fund. So if there is, say, admissions tax for parasailing, it would 100% go to the harbor fund. If it's zip line, it would be in the general fund's admissions tax. So again, we're projecting a slight increase in operating revenues in the range of 3% for the harbor operating funds. Here's a slide that we shared with you on Tuesday, it's showing the operating expenditures. I've also included the harbor capital, though they don't have their own slide, the big change is we do have a small portion of the, a small portion of the public works director, as well as a small portion of the harbor master, time now being charged to harbor capital, considering their management of those projects for this year. So next, we have the harbor public works. So again, public works employees in general is split between general fund public works and harbor public works. A large contract that is in the contract services is for our lifeguard and paramedic services. Future budgets, I may move that to harbor operations instead of a harbor public works, as I think that's probably the more appropriate, but historically, we've been charging it to a harbor public works account. Apologize for that. So our harbor master is here, if there are any questions on, I guess, more appropriately, probably our public works director for this section, if there are any questions on harbor public works. Other major contracts are our restroom maintenance, as well as waterfront trash contract. The one thing that I'm going to have to come back to you with is this DBA loan interest. I think likely it should be moved to harbor capital, and I'm going to have to, I'll provide additional information on what those, what that loan is and what it is for. I'll provide that information in Tuesday's meeting, but it may be a new line item in the harbor capital section, but I will have more info for you on Tuesday for that.
And so the cleaning of the beach, or whatever, that falls under public works, harbor, is that harbor support? Because I guess we did it last year too, right? The last couple of years, we don't rake the beach, but we clean it somehow?
Yeah, we're out there as we're doing the waterfront in our daily sweeping, and then you see us pull out the little piece of equipment, and we have a drag with a screen.
Yeah.
And we're also, you know, we're picking up major pieces of the trash, you know, as we see it, and that's as we come back for that second round of cleaning. And you'll see more of our part-time folks out there cleaning this visitor season.
Of course.
We're focusing on that.
No, it looks good. Well, JJ, how long has it been when the harbor depart, when the county used to do that service? This guy did it.
Look at the guy next to you.
I know, that's how long ago it's been.
Back in the 60s.
That's when it stopped?
No, it stopped, I think, 80, maybe 79, 80.
Okay.
I don't know, that's a long time ago.
Yeah, okay. All right, that is just a.
So we do the tidelines, though, right?
Right.
Do we rake the tidelines?
Yeah, and we still do. Our trash boys, our sanitation workers, and along with public works, we'll rack it up and pile it and put it in bags, and then they'll haul it out. And that, now that summer's, that's one of the early morning jobs that they do, besides sweeping the walkways and out to the mall.
Did you, did you ask for anything in the budget that you're not getting?
I haven't, not yet.
So the next slide I've pulled up is the harbor administration, so this would be the harbor master, the assistant harbor master, and the senior admin, as far as labor goes. The slight decrease is attributed to a portion of the harbor master and assistant harbor master's salary moving to harbor capital, considering their work on the capital projects in the harbor.
And who do we pay rent to? The $11,500? Is that up in the canyon or something?
I think that, the rent for what? I'm sorry, say it again.
There's a rent of 11,500.
Maintenance operation.
Is it up in the harbor? I mean, up in the canyon, do we pay rent up there?
Is that the parking?
The parking, but I don't think.
I believe it is parking for the vehicles, but I couldn't confirm that for Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the plaza there, sorry.
Right. We don't get a government discount, huh? Okay.
So the next one on the list, this is the harbor operations, so this is going to be your patrol officers, as well as dedicated harbor maintenance personnel would make up that salaries section.
Question, again, to refresh my memory, Cindy will know for sure. How many years is our contract with the shore boat operator? Five years?
No, I think it's.
It's five years and then an extension.
And then it has extensions to it.
It has an extension to renew.
I thought it was 10 years and with the extension.
Is that 2.5?
I would say 2.5.
It was 2.5.
I thought it was five years.
Can that be, can that contract amount be negotiated after the five years? Renegotiated, the dollar amount?
I'm not going to answer that, Annie, until I check with legal.
Okay.
I think, yes, but.
Okay. Just curious.
I don't want to give a definite.
What's the vehicle overhead allocation?
So that is the amount of time in the garage spent on vehicle operations, so there was an increase in general to the harbor. As part of that process, I did interview the equipment mechanics, as well as the public works personnel that managed the garage, and that's how we used as our basis for determining how to allocate those costs.
Got it.
And as we discussed a couple of days ago, like on the training and travel with your budget and what happens, and maybe a little more explanation going forward, you don't have to say it to me right now, but, because it's 16, 5, and so at some point, those kind of updates on what kind of training and travel, training is being done is good.
Yes, ma'am, I could provide that. And just, or a quick thing, I have four, three of my part-time employees, four of my part-time employees and the new code officer, if we can get it done in time, will be going to an 832 class over at Biscayne Lou Center for the LA County Sheriff's Department. So that's a 40-hour week, and that gives them 832 PC. They'll write tickets.
Because that's one of the bigger ones, then, one of the.
That's a big one, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big one, okay.
And then the special department expense?
Special, it's like everybody else's, it's a catch-all expense. We also do stuff from the warehouse when we have to go to the harbor store and buy things or go, that aren't, has a line item budget to it, it comes out of that department.
Do, how many years ago did you start taking credit cards? Did the harbor start taking credit cards for mooring fees?
Jeez, I want to say, five years ago, six years ago, I think.
Five years ago. Do we have any, because obviously, there's the processing fee that's associated with credit cards.
Right.
Have we ever done any kind of analysis as to, you know, the fees associated with that? How much, you know, how much revenue are we, well, we're not really losing revenue, but there's an additional cost associated with it.
And to my knowledge, or at least since I've been here, we haven't done any detailed look, I believe what would be available to our disposal would be an additional charge to offset that cost, where it's something we could potentially look into. It couldn't be more than the cost of the credit card fee itself, and that's where it's a little tricky, because the getting, depending on the credit card company getting the rate, but it's something we could potentially look into, is putting an additional service or convenience charge for being able to use a credit card to offset the cost associated with the credit card. Since I've been here, at least, we haven't looked into that.
I don't know, I could be wrong, but I'm not sure that you can put a fee on a credit card to be able to use that credit card, because, you can?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know that it would be worth it for the amount of money. I think it's worth high-level looking into it, but I don't know that it would be worth it to calculate 2.6% on this card or 3.2% on that card.
Yeah, that's.
And most of the credit card fees are in the harbor, the rec department does accept credit cards through Rec Pro, and there is, from a percentage-wise, it's similar, and I want to say it's approximately 2, 2.5% is what we ultimately pay for that convenience.
Good.
JJ, in your professional.
JJ, in your professional service IT, is that, we don't use our ITs, is that for your radios and cameras?
That's for the cameras, setting up the cameras and, and hooking them up, maintaining them, us through Pat and our radios.
Oh, Pat, okay. So we do use our.
The next one on the list is the fuel dock operations. Again, aside from the increase in the overall fuel charges, it's, it's fairly consistent with prior years. We did also look at how we're allocating our general admin costs, and so there was some savings in the, the fuel department, or in the field dock for general admin, but they're also offsetting increases in other harbor fund operating departments. So moving on then, this is, now we're going to speak to the, the other enterprise funds. This, this slide here is really for, to provide kind of a summary of where those funds currently stand, and, and these are funds that I think warrant additional attention. Currently sewer and saltwater revenues are covering our operating expenditures, but not necessarily the capital outlay, and the capital outlay is required as part of our CDO, and so the existing fund balance really isn't enough to cover all of the planned capital outlay in the sewer fund. Solid waste revenues are currently not covering the operating costs, and we'll go into all of these in a bit more detail, as well as Avalon Transit is, is requiring a larger transfer from the general fund than was estimated in, in prior years, and we'll go into detail as, as to why that is.
And at a future council meeting, we will be coming back with the sewer salt and trash and grease that gets placed on the property tax bills for your approval for a rate analysis and recommendations after that of increasing.
So again, here is the overall summary of our enterprise funds, similar to the, the presentation that we shared on Tuesday. It shows the number of full-time equivalent employees charged to each of those funds, as well as the, the maintenance and contract service costs for those funds. To go into the, the sewer fund in more detail, there's a few things I want to pull out before we, we answer any questions. One of them is if you see the decrease in salaries and benefits, and the reason for that is, is we've previously in prior budgets, a portion of the city manager's time and the assistant city manager's time was charged for their administering of the sewer program, the, the contracts with, with our service providers. I have changed the allocation to where now that time is just being charged to the general administration fund, rather than directly to the sewer saltwater fund. So some of the increased costs in the internal service fund are offset by the, the labor savings of moving their time out of there. The, the purpose of the general administration fund is to allocate the cost to the city manager and assistant city manager's time, and so to avoid any potential double counting, I thought it was more appropriate to have that time being charged to general admin and those costs being picked up in changes to allocations.
So isn't that kind of an opposite philosophy than you had with the other of, of dispersing their times where they spend their time? Dispersing the funds where they spend their.
So there, there's a difference between, say, someone in finance or admin time and Bob Greenlaw's time. Bob Greenlaw, our public works, isn't a internal service fund, it's a general fund activity, and so his time isn't, wouldn't be recouped as part of a service allocation, whereas finance and admin, our time in theory is being recouped as part of the, the allocation costs that we put on the different funds. So if a, a public works employee is working on harbor-related activity, or if a public works employee is working on sewer-related activity, the only way we're able to charge those times is by directly allocating a portion of that individual to those funds, whereas a general admin employee, so someone from finance or someone from the city manager's office, their time can get charged through the allocation process, but there really isn't a mechanism to allocate the, the time of, say, a public works employee, other than dividing up his individual labor allocations. So, so the goal, or my goal in the changes in the allocations is for anyone who's in an internal service fund to have 100% or close to 100% of their time in that internal service fund, and charge other funds for their time through the allocation process. But for employees where that isn't really available, so for a public works employee, then to actually divide out that employee's time based on the time they spend. So, so you're right in that, in, in certain employees, I have been taking their time and spreading them out more across funds, and, and other employees, I haven't necessarily been doing that, but doing the opposite, and the reason for it is if they are an employee in an internal service fund, there's a mechanism we can charge funds for to recoup that cost. But for certain employees that don't have an internal service fund to charge time to, there really isn't a mechanism to recoup that cost, other than charging the time directly.
Right. However, I, I understand that pretty much, and if that's okay with everybody, but it just seems like if, you know, if you're spending 5% of your time, or whatever, on, on those kinds of things, and we're going to be looking at rates, and we're going to be looking at a not balanced budget, I don't know if it makes more.
And, and where those costs aren't going away, they're really just being shifted. Instead of charging it directly to labor, you're seeing that being picked up in the increase in the general admin to the, to the fund. So the intent is for, you know, Denise and the city manager's office does spend time administering sewer operations, managing the sewer contract, et cetera, and so we do want to make sure the sewer is paying for their fair share of that time.
Okay.
But we historically have been doing it using an allocation and by charging it directly, and to avoid even the appearance of double charging for Denise's time, that's the rationale for shifting it.
Okay, okay.
So you can, you can see it on this page, in the internal service, the top line in internal service towards the bottom of the page, general admin allocation, you see it's increasing there.
Okay.
So you see the decrease in salaries, but you see the increase in the internal service allocation.
So those kind of numbers will be there when we look at rates.
Right, and so, and that's why it's really important when, when you do a rate study is to make sure that the, the true cost of, of administering and managing is reflected in the fund itself, because that way we, we can better gauge the, the cost of running it and then the rates required to, to support it.
Yeah, perfect. I guess that's what I was looking for.
And, and the insurance did increase significantly, but there is a, a fair amount of general liability risk, as we learned last year, related to sewer operations, as well as there is a slight, there is an increase in the amount of garage time, based on conversations I had with the individuals in the garage and a review of expenditures in the internal service garage fund, or the vehicle maintenance fund. So some of that increase is also driven from there as well. I, I want to say it's 8 or 10% of the garage's time is servicing either the Vactor truck or other trucks that service the harbor oper, or, excuse me, the, the sewer operations. So again, the one other thing I did want to call out is the contract for Environ Strategy Consultants. I used an estimate, and I think my estimate's too high. So in Friday's version, you will see a revised number, and it should be revised downward. So we can discuss that more at Tuesday's meeting, but I do believe my estimate is, is high, and that, that is also going to impact my estimate in the saltwater fund as well. So bear in mind, when you receive the updated version on, on tomorrow, there will likely be a change in those contract amounts. Again, the, the decreases you're seeing in salaries in the saltwater fund are then being picked up by increases in general admins allocation. The same rationale applies as to the sewer fund. So now where I'm in the solid waste fund, just to provide additional context, as far as salaries and benefits go, a portion of an administrative analyst and public's work time, as well as a portion of code enforcement's time, is charged for solid waste for their work related to that fund, but the majority of the expenditures in the fund relate to our contract with CRNR for the, the sanitation services they provide.
And what about our other consultant in town that does trash? Is he in that same line item?
I believe that consultant is part of the sewer public, oh, harbor public works.
Oh, okay.
As his, his trash pickup is dedicated, at my understanding, or largely, is in the harbor.
100%, though, or no? It's split out? Are you talking about Eddie Vega?
Mm-hmm.
I, I believe 100% of his contract is currently being charged to harbor public works.
Okay.
How do we get to do that? I just wonder.
We broke, we used to break it out, Mary, where, and we counted trash cans, how many were, could actually fall in within that amount, and it got switched maybe two budgets ago. There was some, not really a formula, but it was determined at that time. If that's something you want us to look at, we can.
I mean, there is a lot of, lot of trash going up, from whatever the limit is to the harbor. Of course, I don't know. JJ and Bob are cool with it.
Anything below Third Street would all be the harbor, and yes, most of our, most of our trash cans, the other public ones would be up Avalon Canyon Road.
Okay, so nothing really that many when you look at it that way.
We could, we could look at it again.
I'm okay. JJ doesn't mind paying for it. I don't mind, so, go ahead, I'm sorry, Matt.
Not, not a problem. So then, unless there are additional questions in, in solid waste, moving on to transit, again, a, a portion of an admin analyst's time is charged to the transit fund.
Matt, I'm sorry, can I go back one slide for a question?
Of course.
I was trying to formulate it in my head when you moved on. The capital outlay for the landfill closure fee?
Yes.
Is this monies that we're setting aside for future issues?
Yes.
If we have to close the landfill?
And the 19 estimate will be updated in the version you get to reflect 100,000, which we currently budgeted to transfer. So right now, there is nothing in the estimate in 19, but we will be writing that check this week, so I will.
Okay.
Have that as 100,000.
Okay. And just to remind you that that number is provided to us by CalRecycle, and they do a, a re-estimate of it about every five years, and we're just about due for another.
But this, this is really just, we're setting this aside for the future.
So there, there's.
It was into an account called Northern Trust.
Okay.
And, and the number could change, but there currently, I believe the estimated cost for closure and post-closure type activities is 4.5 million. That, that number may change based on when they do their five-year update, and we currently have a trust account set aside with, I want to say approximately 2.2 or 2.3 million, and so the goal of these payments would, to close that gap in funding, so when the landfill is filled, we have funds dedicated to, to pay for those closure-related costs.
So if we could come up with an op, a viable plan to extract a lot of the stuff that's in the landfill, which would give it longer life?
That would, in theory, lower the amount we would need to contribute if we have more time to build up that fund, so that potentially would change our, our contribution amounts. But if you see in the, the 10-year CIP plan, we do plan out and show what the contributions are going to be required to be to close that gap, based on the most recent estimates of useful life of the landfill that we have available. As those estimates change, the amounts we need to contribute may change. If there's additional extended life because of how we're, we're using it.
Right.
Then potentially, those costs could be spread out over more years. Conversely, if, if the cost of closure estimates go up, or if the amount of useful years decreases, that, that could negatively or change the, the amount we have to contribute.
Okay. Avalon Transit.
So the, the couple of things I do want to bring up in the contractual services, and, and just how the Avalon Transit Fund works in general, is most of our transit operations, and historically, most of our commuter subsidy has been paid for with local return funds, and that's in Fund 122, that's not shown on this page. Any excess costs not covered by those local return funds are then charged to this transit fund, which is partially offset by the fares we generate from our transit services, with the rest being subsidized by the general fund. Significant, so in the contractual services section, what you're seeing is a portion of Transportation Concepts contract, as well as our subsidized amounts provided for the taxi service program, which approximately are 90,000 each, and, and that make up that 180 listed there. Again, the, the taxi book is partially offset by the monies we collect, as well as the transit is offset by our transit fares, with the remainder being picked up by the general fund via transfer. A, a major change you will see is the amount being allocated as far as internal services go. Historically, we had very little of the city manager's officer finances' time being charged to the transit fund. Again, the, the likelihood for the reasoning behind that was the general fund was having to pick up the difference anyways, but why we've made this change is we want to accurately reflect the true cost of, of managing the, the transit system. As there is a, a fair amount of finances' time, we get audited every year by MTA, and there's, there's a number of reporting requirements. There will be an NTD audit beginning next year, which I anticipate will take some of my time, as well as the time for staff just to manage the, the ticket book process, whether that's the commuter subsidy for the cross-channel, or the taxi book subsidy, there's, there's finance and admin time associated with managing that, as well as city manager time, and so that's really what those increases are, are showing. The general fund's ultimately picking up those differences with a transfer, but what we're trying to do is show the true cost to operate the, the enterprise fund, and if, if that true cost is going to be subsidized by the general fund, that is absolutely something we can do, but we just want it to be clear, the, the cost of operating those, that fund.
Special departmental expense? Is that signage and things like that? I mean.
I can, I will have to follow up with you on that. I'm, I'm not entirely certain what makes up that number. I know a portion of it would, it'd be a very small portion, but I would have to follow up with that department, and, and I can get an answer for you on Tuesday for that amount.
I mean, I even wonder, office supplies? I mean, we have a part-time person working on it, and.
So that, that would be any, I mean, I would, I would guess it would be related to.
The cards that we order, the laminating, the.
Okay, okay, okay. So in your thousands of worksheets you probably have somewhere, or the thousands of pages of this, so for example, when you say there's that, there's the allocation of your time, let's say in here, and there's allocation there, if we were to add them all up, they would add balance to a number?
Yes.
Really? That's crazy.
So how.
I mean, that's to happen that way, but that's really crazy.
And it is formula-driven in Excel, and that's, you know, every once in a while, a number gets off, but if you do go to the, apologize for scrolling quickly, the first page or the page that we've provided, if you see the internal service revenue column and the internal service expenditure column, those two numbers add up, and that is the total cost of operating the, the general admins, that's finance and city manager primarily, as well as some legal and, and other general expenditures, the vehicle maintenance and the insurance fund. And so how we allocate those vary based on the, the nature of the activity. For general admin, we used operating expenditures as our allocation basis, and by that, I mean if a harbor fund is 50% of our operating expenditures, our estimation is that 50% of finances' time is doing AP for the harbor employees, or doing, or doing payroll for the harbor employees, or doing AP for paying all the, the harbor-related expenditures. We did make some adjustments because we felt large contracts could skew that allocation basis. So for example, the, the sheriff's contract is, is 1.6 million, so it's a, or the sheriff's department, and as a total, is over 1.5 million, but that maybe isn't reflective of the amount of time it takes for us to manage, because there's no payroll for finance, there's no IT. So we did weight contract, large contracts differently, but more or less, what we used as kind of our basis for how we're going to allocate the general admins' costs was looking at overall operating expenditures, and then adjusting where, say, a large contract may skew the amount of work required by finance or admin to administer. But again, we, the goal behind the changes is we wanted to make sure the true cost was being charged to the funds for the benefit they receive, and also, so we have a documented rationale as to.
Sure.
Why we're charging, what we're charging. And also, so we have a documented rationale as to why we're charging what we're charging.
No, I, I get it. Okay.
And it, it is a big change. I know I've said it a few times, but I just want to make sure it's, it's clear for, for council and the public because it is a change from how we prior, how prior budgets allocated it. But I, I believe this is a, a fair way of, of charging for those fund services.
Yes. Okay.
We're coming towards the end of the prepared presentation. I think we just have the internal service funds to go. So again, this is just the general administration fund we have on here and it can be broken down. When I say administration, it's really city manager's office, as you can think of it that way. Finance, legal, general government expenditures, and then the elected officials. The ones I'm going to be focusing on for the presentation are the, the largest three. So we're going to be looking at general admin or the city manager's office, finance, and then the general government and legal combined as, as one group.
I know I asked this on Tuesday and I'm sorry I forgot.
Not, not a problem.
What is maintenance and operations associated with elected officials?
I don't have my binder in front of me.
We're tough, we're tough to maintain.
I'm trying to, we're just as expensive to maintain as we are to, to pay.
I, I want to say that is going to be memberships and dues as well as training and travel.
You're right. That's what it was. Memberships and dues.
So I, I believe it's, those are the two major accounts in there.
Got it.
I, I can have a detailed breakdown for, for Tuesday if, if, if we want to go that route. But I'm ninety percent sure it's, most of it is either membership dues or training and travel.
I, I'm curious to know what it is because it just comes across as awkward looking at it under maintenance and operations. I mean, if it's, so for example, we pay approximately, we pay several thousand dollars to participate in Gateway City's Council of Governments. Is that, is that number in here? Because that's a city dues and subscription. That's not for elected officials. That's for the city. So I would associate that in a different fund than on electeds.
And, and it would likely still be in the same fund, but we can have it in a different department. We can move that to general government. Again, this is kind of historically where that's been charged to, but we can move it to general government. It still would be an internal service, general administration fund, but it would be a different, we can move it to a different department.
But operations for elected officials being League of California Cities participation in an event, I can understand that. But when it's a, it's a city required dues, even if we just have a seat, if it's SCAG or, or, you know, the league, if we have a seat, it's a city seat. It's not the elected official, if that makes sense. So I just want to make sure, i- if I were a member of the community, I would look at this and say, wow, you know, what, what is.
And, and we can move that to a, a general government department. It sounds like that, that might be where it would make sense.
Just the city dues.
So again, again, not to, not to, to repeat myself, but the reason why the salaries are increased in the general administration is partially with the city manager now, excuse me, the assistant city manager now being charged for an entire year. And the other reason for the change is the time that was previously being charged to the sewer-saltwater funds for the city manager and assistant city manager's time is now being charged directly to the general administration fund, with those costs then being recouped in increased allocations to those funds. And so that's what's really driving that, that large salary change in the fund. It's not necessarily to the individuals. It's just how we have been allocating their time. The other major change in this would be election expense. We do have fifty thousand planned. As, as has been mentioned, this is going to be the first election where we partner directly with the county for our election. And there's, there's a bit of an unknown going into, to how that, that process will play out. So moving to the, unless there are questions for the, the general administration. Moving to finance, again, the increase in finance is going to be driven by changes in how we allocated. Previously, more of finances time was allocated to the successor agency. But as activities there has wound down, we have shifted more of that to the finance department, as well as our finance director position was in prior budgets only allocated for three-fourths of a year. We now have a, a finance director in the budget for a full year. We do have a vacant senior account position that is in the budget for a full year as well. Contract services, just to provide a little clarity on what makes up that number. That relates to our contract with Whitman, who manages our ambulance billing, as well as Centric, which is our payroll, payroll software support. They also assist us with some of the, the filings we have to make as far as payroll taxes go. And then the, the third piece is our OpenGov contract, which helps with our, our budget builder tool, as well as our financial reporting tool, which we're looking to, to roll out in more detail in the coming budget year.
Empress, I'm sorry, up to the salaries and the post-employment contribution, was that paying somebody off or something after years and years or something?
No, that, that would.
What is that? Why does that go down?
Post, post-employment contribution would be our.
It went up. I'm sorry. Yeah, never mind.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
So then, uh, legal and general government, and again, we can, you know, potentially move some of the membership dues to this area of the internal service fund. A lot of it, the utilities would be utilities related to city hall. There is funds for maintenance of city hall premises. The city returning retainer makes up the largest portion of the contract services, but our IT services are provided to us on a contract basis and that's where those fall, as well as our accounting and auditing. We do have monies in the budget for potential audits of certain revenues. So for example, if we wanted to do an admissions tax audit, we do have some funds in the budget in the accounting and auditing.
Wasn't that something that we kind of said we really wanted instead of in case we really want to?
And that's, that's why it is in the, the proposed budget.
Okay, thanks. Cool. Questions on this part?
No questions.
And professional services, I believe the majority of that is for Townsend. I believe forty-five, forty-eight thousand of that amount is related to Town. Forty-eight. And again, the capital outlay, Pat spoke to it on Tuesday. That's the requested new servers, as well as new operating system, firewall, and replacement of, of outdated computers.
So, oh, correct me, help me. At some point, at some place, there is just a, an IT number, total IT number?
We, we can break that out separately. Right now, where the vast majority of our contracted IT services are is in that professional services IT, as well as IT supplies, is, is kind of our maintenance and operation IT spend is in those two funds. There is an amount in the harbor and I can speak to it in more detail on Tuesday, but I believe we do pay someone to manage the system they have in the harbor to track moorings and track payments. We have our own software for that. And so I think there was a question earlier in the harbor operations dealing with IT, and I think we, we may have discussed cameras. I think really what that likely is, and, and I can confirm this Tuesday, but I believe that is for maintaining our software that we use to track moorings and payments and, and that sort of thing in the harbor.
Uh, the harbor side of, of the discussion is, the IT guy doesn't do that. The IT guy does the security on the computers, on the computer stuff, the cameras, that sort of thing. The mooring program is run separately and we have a line item for the mooring program. And when we need to add something to the mooring program, like a report or we want to find something to do something different, she goes in and does it at that, at that point. And that's done through a, a line item, mooring computers in the, in the harbor operations side of it. But the IT part of it is cameras on the mole, cameras on the pier, cameras in the alleyway, you know, these computers in city hall, the security for those computers and, and stuff like that.
And, and similar to legal, what we can provide on Tuesday is a, a chart showing what our total IT spend is across departments. That won't be hard to put together. So that way we can.
I mean, if you want it, if you don't think you need it.
The mayor, the, Pat Grady also provides us with a budget request. We go over it. We figure out what we want to throw out or keep in, and I can readily give that to you. It's just a one-page thing and what we've approved.
Okay.
And then how Matt determines it's spread out through it.
Sure. Okay.
And I, and before we go on to our last page, I just wanted to reassure Councilmember Cassidy that in our detailed budget on page sixty-three of that booklet, it is just for the city council and your membership and dues on that page is five thousand dollars. So the summary in general administration or whatever that slide was titled is administration and all the.
Okay.
But in, inside your book, there are pages sixty-three. Calls out fifteen thousand for your train, training and travel, and then five thousand for your membership and dues. Okay.
There we go.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. So again, this is kind of circling back. The highlighted numbers here were the funds that I wanted to, to go through in more detail to cover what made up the, the operating expenditures in those accounts. Again, the general fund right now does have an anticipated draw on fund balance, largely driven by transfers to transit as well as to the traffic safety fund. Harbor operations, as well as the fuel dock, do have net operating draws on fund balance or net operating losses based on estimated expenditures, operating expenditures exceeding the estimated revenues. And again, the, the sewer, saltwater, solid waste are in a similar situation where we have in sewer and saltwater, operating revenues exceeding expenditures, but not enough to pay for the required capital outlays. And I also highlighted general administration because that is the largest of the internal service funds. That does get divided and charged to the other funds. So that's one of the reasons I wanted to go through that in detail because it is a, a large expense for a lot of departments. With that, I, I wanted to kind of turn over the rest of the time we have to, if there are additional questions or if there are analysis, we can prepare for Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, so, so assuming. Okay, and help me with this. Assuming we raised the sewer fees enough to cover six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is probably unrealistic, right?
And, and again, with sewer, we are going to look at what we had budgeted in the Enviren contract. So hopefully it, that will adapt, add some additional operating revenues. But yes, we would, i- in theory, we would want our operating revenues for the sewer and saltwater to cover all the operating expenditures plus any anticipated required capital improvements.
And which were, there's no money for that.
And, and right now, as, as things are, are budgeted, there's not enough.
Okay. And Avalon Transit, what are, are we looking at something creative to, to get that number down? I mean, how, how do we get that?
We had the discussion at the last council meeting about the taxi voucher program.
Right.
And that will be an agenda item on Tuesday. And I think that the option that you picked was going to lower it by twenty-four thousand dollars maybe.
I, I don't recall the, the option that was picked. My recollection was that it was going to stay the same, but with the intent of increased advertisement to encourage more dialer ride use, but no change to the actual subsidy amount, is I believe what was discussed. I, I could be mistaken there.
Well, I was, I went down there that day. I don't know if anybody else did. And I sat there for quite a while and I think six people signed up. So, but, but I think the comment was continue to do those kinds of sit-outs there because it is really, it was a good PR thing.
But I don't think we've had anything hit the paper yet either. And I, I'm pretty sure that there's some public PR coming out.
Okay. And then the fifty thousand dollars that, that Audrey was saying for Metro, that was going to go into this as well?
So the fifty thousand in Metro right now, because we, it looks like we are going to receive that additional funds. I don't have any money in the transit fund for excess commuter subsidy. So the goal would be that there would be no additional draw on fund balance for that program. However, we do factor the time it takes to administer the commuter subsidy in an increase to the internal service allocation in that fund. So that's monies that we've historically always done as part of the general fund, but we just maybe haven't shown on paper those, those costs.
Okay. Mayor, I need to make a correction. So the option you picked was to increase the amount that the book was going to cost and to promote the dialer ride. And we were hoping to decrease, so by increasing the amount of the book and decreasing the amount of ridership to go over to the dialer ride, potentially could lower that by twenty-four, but we won't know that till next year.
Right.
So current, currently, this, approximately, the, the city general fund kicks in about seventy thousand dollars to subsidize the, the taxi program.
So when you talk about a balanced budget, it's supposed to be balanced to what we had last year? No?
So.
I mean, because, because last year was, so that two million eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
I, I think there's a couple of things. One, it's important to, to look at each fund like they're, they're own separate business. And ideally, what we would see is each fund generating enough revenue to cover not only their operating expenditures, but their capital outlay. How, in the past few years, how we've balanced the budget is by drawing on existing fund balances. And while those fund balances exist for the benefit of the public and we, we don't necessarily want to just be sitting on money at the same time, we need to have monies available in the event that revenues, you know, a decrease in revenues, we're, we're still in a position to where we can operate with a similar level of services. So ideally, we would want operating revenues to cover our operating expenditures as well as our planned capital outlay, with cash reserves available in the event that operating revenues come in below expectations on a short-term basis. So when we say this is a balanced budget, it is balanced, but it's balanced by drawing on existing fund balances in a number of the funds. And so one, one of the, the goals in our budget policy document is to set up dedicated reserves. So when we're talking about the, the fund balance, we have funds set aside for reserves for those situations where revenues don't come in, as well as we have funds available to be used to draw on fund balance if there is a, a capital project that requires it and, and council deems it's appropriate to use fund balance to, to offset those costs. So that's really where we're trying to get to as, as a finance department and as a city, is to where we have more clear delineation between reserve fund balance and fund balance that can be available to, say, help pay for capital projects.
So what's next? We have twenty-five minutes or so. If my eyes are seeing okay, or twenty. So I, I guess I. So if you look, go fund by fund, department by department, I guess, the departmental stuff, all the, the personnel people and all of that, you know, finance, da-da-da-da-da. I mean, do we say something like, well, okay, those numbers seem good, so, so be it? But I guess I'm, I guess I'm trying to say, besides raising money, what can we, what, what do we cut? And anything that I'm thinking of that's, that's revenue generating isn't big money. You know, so the funds are one thing and then the, the, just the day-to-day stuff is another. And I don't know if we.
One, one of the challenges in our, and, and it's not unique to Avalon. I think it's every city, is there is, a lot of our operating expenditures are tied to labor. That's across all the. all the funds. That's, that's not unique to Avalon. And those, labor is tied to services that the city is currently providing. So, you know, I, I think that we need to be looking at opportunities to increase revenue. And if we're looking at areas to save operating expenditures, we also need to think of it in terms of what services we're providing for that, and, and what services are we prioritizing. And, and I think that's one of the kind of discussions we need to have as a, as a city, because I think the, the answer to get to where we need is looking at both, and then, you know, figuring out, you know, what, what makes sense and what we can sustain. Because in the, in the short term, we can draw on fund balance to cover our operating expenditures, but it's, it's a, that is a short-term strategy, and, and, you know, it's something that we need to always be mindful as we're, we're talking about, you know, new capital outlay. We need to be thinking in terms of what are the maintenance and operating costs to manage those new capital projects, because as, as we do build new facilities in town, that puts more toll on our maintenance staff to keep them up to a level of, of standards that we care about. As we look to provide additional services to the community, there is an administrative cost to, to provide those services. And so we, we need to be mindful anytime we're, we're looking at expanding services, knowing what the, the ongoing costs are going to be for those services.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I would anticipate, Mayor, in the next, in the near future, to have maybe just a study session strictly on ideas of raising revenue. I know staff, as a whole, all of us, have seriously looked at our budgets, where cuts could be made. As Matt says, most of it is personnel. I mean, if it's overtime, fine, you know, we do try to keep track of that. But there's certain departments that overtime cannot be eliminated from. And as Matt says, anything that we're, we tried to cut could affect our services. So, anyway, when we have a study session, we'll bring forth our ideas.
Well, hopefully sooner than later.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and, for example, this is, but see, silly little ideas that I have are, they're not big. For example, I've talked about putting solar on the buildings, and you can have solar put on for nothing, you know, with those companies that they install, they maintain, and, and it reduces our-
Utilities.
Our utilities. I mean, that's a small thing, but if you looked at the warehouse and this and that building and, and the harbor, if that saves us forty or fifty, because I don't know, because you were unable to break down what our electric was specifically without some-
I mean, I, I, what I did for the purpose of the budget is I combine water, gas, electricity as just a utilities bucket. In the detail, you can see how it's split out. I, I can tell you, just personally, budgeting utilities has been a challenge for me, because there, there are fluctuations month to month, so it's hard to anticipate some of the costs.
Oh, sure.
And we have two-hundred-and-twenty different service accounts with Edison, so-
Damn.
It, it is a, just from a budgeting standpoint, I found it to be more of a challenge than you might think. But it is, you know, something we can look at is what our, our utilities are across the board, because it is a fair part of our operating budget.
Yeah. So that was just one little example that I had, and that I've mentioned before. And if it's not worth, if y'all say it's not worth our time to look into, well, then that's fine, but, but I'm trying to find ways to-
We can look into it, Mayor. It's been a few years since somebody came and did an evaluation, I think.
Mm-hmm. And then we're involved in that, what's that program, the home, one of those people that came, we signed up for that solar home thing, and they could provide solar for home, what was it called? Remember?
The HERO program? Are you talking about?
Yeah, the HERO program.
We signed up to be, remember, we never did anything with it. But, but that's different than putting solar-
So I have done other solar photoe, projects at other agencies I've worked for. And what you'll look for is you'll evaluate, you know, your biggest energy users, because that's really where the bang for the buck comes. And what you'll find out will probably be your wastewater treatment plant, because it uses all kinds of energy.
Wow.
So that's where you would cite it, and hopefully it would create more than that needs. And then now, government code allows you to be able to put that in and use it in other areas. It didn't used to about maybe ten years ago, but now you can do the net metering. So it's that. And then also the opportunities that we were looking into at the landfill and, and CodeGen there, and whether that could provide power, the energy for the wastewater treatment plant, which is right next to it. So those are some things that I think there's some value in looking at, kind of low-hanging fruit, to do those things.
And then there's the whole, I appreciate that, and I think that's good, because, you know, Edison talks, I mean Edison, the dumb people talk about the anaerobic digester, which is really not even enough. We don't have that much green waste, and so we've got to think of those bigger projects. And then my concern is, we really don't have any money for like, we really need to do this study, or, you know, when, when the council has time to do some more strategic planning with staff and where we want to go, we really need to have some money to be able to do that, instead of saying, we got to wait. I mean, the, the future is, is upon us, and we're kind of, I don't want to say we're just existing, but we kind of are. We're not, we're not doing all that sustainable going-forward stuff so much. Anyway-
Yeah, I do think we need to do, as a city manager suggests, to have some workshop. We've been looking into things, but considering what could happen at the landfill, you know, we are putting money in to the trust fund, but if that can be extended out, there are some funds right there that you can use to put that technology in, and so you already have that. So it's really putting all that together, and you may be able to fund that.
Right.
So it, it should have a good look at it.
Excellent, excellent. Okay.
Mayor and council?
Yes.
I just, you talk about this budget, and, you know, you talk about balanced budget, but I, I would just like to say that the things that stick out to me in this budget, if you look at the transfers in and transfers out columns on that last page of this budget, you can see that there's a significant amount of money that flows from the general fund to, you know, the Avalon Transit Fund and to traffic control and safety. And so those draws are significant, but if you look at the net change in fund balance column for the sewer fund and for the solid waste fund, you see some pretty big negatives there. So you see enterprise funds that are not, the revenues are not supporting those operations, including the capital programs that are needed, to keep those systems up to standard. So I would see that as a red flag for the budget, but it's not something that you can solve this year unless you go back and do a cost of service study and do something about the rates in those enterprise funds, so they become self-supporting. Because you can't provide general government services if that money is supporting the enterprise funds.
And we, and to, okay, so before we look at rates for the sewer and the solid waste, we have to do a cost analysis study, is that what you said?
Yes, a rate analysis.
Rate analysis, and how long does that take? And who does that?
Well, you, I mean, you could do it internally, but you could use outside consultants to do it as well, so.
I mean, is that something-
We did it in two thousand seventeen. I think it cost us about, it was just under thirty-six thousand dollars. And that's the ones that were still in the council, that that's when the big issue was the commercial trash and how it was determined. Matt has discovered some things in that rate analysis that we would like to-
Again, I don't, I don't want to get too into detail, but it did strike me as odd, since it wasn't that long ago, we did do the rate study. You know, there, there have been some cost increases that have exceeded the estimations used for developing that analysis, and, and some of the, the assumptions as far as the, the amount of work from an administration standpoint, you know, may need to be looked at again. I don't really want to get too into the weeds on that, but I, I think, you know, at some point, we will be coming back to showing what that study, what those assumptions were in that study, and why our operating expenditures are exceeding what those estimates were used as the basis for determining rates in that study. But it, the, the rate study, in theory, should have projected our, our revenues to go with our costs. What I've been seeing is the revenues are more or less in line with those estimates, but the operating expenditures are, are exceeding what the estimated increases were. I'm really not at a point where I can talk about it in detail, but that was just kind of a first impression review of it. And so when we do come back to discuss the rate study further, we'll be able to speak in, in more detail to those points.
So then my, thank you. Then my question is, okay, can we do this internally? Are we, are we going to do a rate study? If we're going to do a rate study, we need to put money in the budget. Right?
Yes, to both of those, Mayor. We just, whatever we determine, we have to be very careful that whatever we come to you and send to the property owners, that this is what, if we are challenged, we have to be able to justify, we are increasing these rates by that. It's like our development impact fees, it's just, just can't pick a number, we have to justify it all. So can I get back to you on whether we'll do it internally?
Sure.
We, obviously, we'll have to consult with legal to make sure that, because we're recommending this amount, that we, if, we have to follow the correct process.
You can't just say, if you come up with a number, we can't just say, this is the rate increase, and every year going forward, it's a, it's a CPR or whatever, so we don't have to come back, or?
Well, at one time, we were doing that, and then it was, you, you have to justify it, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that probably happened around then.
You just have to make sure you're following the requirements of Prop 218.
Oh, right, okay.
Right? And so, cost of service, right? You have to be able to justify, this is our true cost of service, and then these are the rates that support it.
Okay.
So are we, originally, we were talking about saving some time for increased revenue sort of discussion. So are we now saying that we're going to do that at a separate study session?
Yes. Cindy, I would rather be very prepared for that, to give you a lot of information, and not just throw out-
Okay.
I mean, we've already thrown out those ideas at a meeting we had at our last budget in October, and three of those revenue generating ideas, just the top of my head, was that two percent increase in our TOT, quarter percent in sales taxes, were just the ideas, and our third one was-
I don't recall off the top of my head, but just given the, there's only a few revenue sources that, you know, we have control over, that could potentially generate the types of revenue to, you know, make significant changes as far as general fund goes, and that is our TOT and our admissions tax, we have control over, and it's a fairly sizable revenue source, as well as sales tax. We are limited in sales tax to a quarter of a percent, but that would be approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand more in, in revenue. I, I don't know if ad tax was the third one we discussed, but off the top of my-
That was it.
Off the top of my head, that would be the, the third largest, say, general fund revenue we have some control over. Again, any increase in taxes would have to go to the voters.
Mm-hmm. So can we, what is your timeline to bring this back for discussion?
It would be sometime within the next couple of months, Cindy, because we would have to move forward with putting it on our, on the election.
So is it fair to-
So in September to October, we have to have everything fine-tuned and-
Is it, is it fair to ask that we have that study session before the end of July?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I, I just don't want to see us push this out, because I have a lot of ideas for revenue generation, and I, I understand tonight, today, we don't have enough time, but I just don't want it to go six months from now.
Will you be sure you share those with staff, so we can flush out any, any potential?
Okay, it's ten till, and we have a ceremony to attend. Is there any comments from the-
I would just like to make one comment. Happy birthday to Julia. It's her birthday today. I won't say which one, but happy birthday if you're watching at home.
You mean, she's watching?
She's, she's my biggest fan, so I'm sure she's watching.
That is so sweet. Any other announcement? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt, Ron, and staff, thank you. Meeting adjourned.